This is our pre-meeting. We're going to handle our schedule for. I'll make some decisions later.
This is the pre-meeting. I'm going to go with this. This is September thirteenth.
I told you to call.
Yeah, I told you. We have to set them up. Appeals we have requests of labor's and noise or that's on October twenty-second in the public station of Royal Park until five p.m. November nineteenth in public station of Royal Park at eleven a.m. until five p.m.
Yeah, Captain Davis.
Public caries today is a public carier.
We don't property. But ended at nine fifteen and nine oh seven. Hillcrest Road from B two to B three.
No issue.
Public carier to restructure at twenty seven twenty-one in Parker Avenue, one oh seven Menoffe Street, one thousand five Texas Street, sixteen twelve. We want to build dry public leases and order them.
At, um, one thousand five Texas Street, uh, David, is that one that we can secure and protect in light of the huge interest in redeveloped more properties that are historic?
Just a brief history before this location, the city has secured it. We did the se- securing of the doors, the windows. Uh, we even did some preservation by painting the exterior wood so it wouldn't continue to deteriorate. The problem is, we didn't have a chance to go into the inside of the building, which is not our scope to secure. We want to make sure that we're securing structurally sound buildings, and this one has deteriorated to the point where it's no longer structurally sound. We've got foundation issues that are failing, exterior walls that are failing, and the roof that's failing. Um, but to follow up, yes, we have secured this, I believe, two times. I know one time for sure the owner has paid the, uh, his costs. Um, he has made, has known to the city that he is not going to repair it based on his PAC's actions. Um, but yet he won't sell it. So we're, we're at the point where we have a building that's unsafe. It's deteriorated to the point where it's collapsing in certain areas of the foundation because of the termite damage. And the only option that I have is to go and demolish it around based on the structure's condition.
Karen.
Doesn't have any historic value. Oh, I know this house. This is one of the oldest ones, the White House, New Block, next to the World Health College. And you said it's all the part.
That is correct. The, the, the foundation is deteriorated. We have part of the roof that is, is failing.
So it's no way to save it, or nobody's taking an interest in saving it?
Um, I, my understanding, and I could be wrong, is that the owner will, is not in a position or does not want to sell it.
Who's the owner?
You're looking at, hold on one second. The protections.
Warren and Shirley Mason.
Yes.
Give me a, give me a week.
Uh, we can if you like.
Just give me a week.
However, I do want to follow up with one other item. Um, with the previous securing action, there was fixed costs. There was a delay in the owner paying them, so we did initiate a municipal lien foreclosure, and that was when the owner did pay to stop the municipal foreclosure process. That was approximately two and a half years ago.
You know, maybe move forward with the demolition or force then to upgrade the property.
And just to follow up.
Why don't you move forward with demolition? Let's give a call to them, let them know that if they don't do anything with it, we're going to tear it.
Correct. And, and just to let the council owner remind you that, just because it's declared, there is a ten-day appeal period, anyone who has an interest can file an appeal. But also municipal enforcement, we have other actions and steps. Once we pass that appeal period and we have the declared notion, I'm sorry, the declared resolution ordering its demolition, we still have to have utility notices go out to disconnect utilities. We have to, uh, request quotes. So there's a process behind it that will give somebody, if an interested party is, wants to desire to rehabilitate this structure, an opportunity. Just because it's declared doesn't mean it's going to be demolished overnight.
Yeah, but we can't give it to an interested party if the owner still owns the property of the house and doesn't want to sell it.
Correct.
So even if we tore it down, it was still on the dirt. It'd just be in debt to us by lien. I hate to see such a historic property go away, and there is an opportunity maybe to negotiate with the owner to get something done. One next door to it was a twin. It was done extremely nicely.
All right, guys, my order for a week or just go forward.
Move forward with it. I'm still going to take a week and see if I can find out what's.
Well, Texas, this is another recommendation to the council, Mr. Erving. Um, we would check product protection. We'll try to control.
On this, um, I've spoken to Mr. Erving, and we were trying to get a date. We haven't get anything. We were working with Chief Ryan and Mr. Erving to, uh, to find the date to talk about this because he's got some people in his neighborhood that he wanted to include, and I don't think we have gotten that set up yet. So he does want to speak about, uh, the fact that they would like to have shop partners in the neighborhood. Uh, he li- his neighborhood is on Moffitt Road, and of course, we know how busy Moffitt Road is. He's concerned about traffic control out there, especially when kids are getting off the school bus up at Old Stella Land School. So that's what he will be speaking about. I think Captain Rowland may have, not Captain Rowland, Captain Ridley came out, uh, sometime ago and like set up some traffic control involved, so I think this one he wants to do. So, yeah.
This is resolution settled. I think resolution settled over forty-five eighty-one, five eight two, five eight three, five eight four. Our structures at eleven oh nine, Am Street, eleven ten, Am Street, fifty-five Clay Street, two oh nine, that can happen to the public business.
Karen.
I'm okay with Lex.
Go ahead, DeRusso.
Clay, that's, Clay is the one I've seen before, Adams. Let me go.
Resolutions that, oh, seven six two, oh, sorry, no, uh, oh, seven six two, seven
six three, seven six four, seven six five, seven six, seven six, seven six, our, um, authorized, we must give them private power, prior of all, um, that tables, it is a, A T and T, um, for where we have the lobby. And with our.
Mr. President.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, just, just a question with, with this. How close are we to getting started with this, and how long do we think that project's going to take? Just out of curiosity.
So, and I think next year out of one fifty, but.
So this is going to start driving some questions, I think?
Yeah. Uh, this, this project is a new one that'll be led by Aldi. It's currently scheduled for their, uh, December letting, which will probably translate into like a February, March physical, physical start.
Okay.
Probably two, probably two years, eighteen months, two-year duration.
Two years.
Okay.
I have a couple of thoughts in this short edition. The project will proceed in phases, and it will start at Air Force Boulevard in, in the first phase, it takes Air Force Boulevard Bridge, and then the next phase is the bridge, uh, particularly short, the roundabout, and the last phase is the roundabout. Is that all right? Um, each of those phases will pose traffic management problems. Um, slightly different from phase to phase, but each one will propose traffic management problems. Uh, I've talked to the engineering staff and, uh, I intend to talk to, uh, the police department about developing traffic management plans for each of the three phases in order to try as best we can to keep, uh, the significant traffic, which flows from west to east in the morning and east to west in evening out of neighborhoods. Uh, and once we get that together, my intention is to lead the neighborhood organizations in order to, uh, share the planning for the, uh, project and the traffic management.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Zero eight seven six eight, move purchase orders around Air Force Boulevard, managing system. Zero eight seven sixty-nine, approve purchase order to golf, golf, provide armor, area best for indeed. Zero eight seven seventy, approve purchase order to site one lands, get plastic irrigation, control sensors, car to the cabin to various park. Zero eight seven seven one, approve purchase order to government or Apple, high ban, go tablets and bases. Zero eight seven seven two, approve purchase order to Ascona Tree, expert for tree and tree limb removal, Dalton Street. Zero eight seven seven three, approve purchase order to the side of second, the desktop computers. Zero eight seven seven four, approve purchase order to record on record, for the active street line, code and fixtures. Zero eight seven seven five, approve purchase order to show, for this, seven four, pick the table, various parts. Zero eight seven seven six, approve purchase order to see the government or network cameras with mounts. Zero nine seven seven seven, adopt for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, general fund, capital improvements, funding emergency, fund budgets.
Counsel.
Yes, Mr. President. Well, I've got a list of amendments that I will offer up today. Um, I've got, well, we'll take them individually. Here you go. I have quite a fair amount of copy of them. Supplied everyone with a copy, but for the record, uh, amendments proposed is in the general fund, reduce office professional responsibility by one day to thousand four hundred seventy-three dollars, add two hundred thousand dollars to legal, rediscipline court support from that, add fifty thousand HR for sexual harassment training as part of that, and then create a new line item for potential future departments, seven hundred fifty-two thousand. Uh, amendment two, in the general fund, reduce historic personnel by a hundred eighty-nine thousand, add a hundred eighty-nine thousand to municipal enforcement personnel. Amendment three, reduce the transfer to Z O City Golf Course by one hundred thirty-three thousand and add that money to Right Away Mowing. Uh, reduce the History Museum performance contract by four hundred thirty-five thousand, add two hundred thousand for a performance contract with federal recovery resource, a hundred thousand for stump grinding, a hundred thirty-five thousand for right away mowing. And fifth and final is reduce transfer to capital by a million dollars, create new line item for ditch maintenance for one million dollars, and then reduce economic incentive in capital for one million dollars. And, I mean, because these were just delivered to y'all this morning, I mean, to truly consider them, I mean, it may make sense to hold the budget open for approval until next week so that everybody has the opportunity to truly understand the implications of these amendments, um, you know, get any questions you have answered, you know, maybe reach out to me, or we can have a discussion about why I'm making these amendments, um, and the implications they're going to have on the departments. So, you know, maybe it makes sense to hold the budget open until next week for approval.
Jones.
Yeah, a couple of things. The, um, the History Museum, that is, here's representatives here today from History Museum.
Yes.
Could you come up, please? Because I, I understand this is all for salary increases, um, and, and what I would like to know is how many people are currently employed? What is that salary increase looking like? Because this would be not just one year, this would be year over year increase of four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars, which, you know, that, that adds up pretty quickly year over year. So what, what is, what does that do for us?
So, as you said, vast majority of this for personnel for salary increases. The museum currently has twenty-two employees, um, and what this allows us to do is to bring, to bring the wage to the city's standard of fifteen twenty-two an hour. And frankly, right now, the History Museum has employees that are well below that. Our employees desperately need this money, and this is really critical to sustaining operations at the History Museum. And I really can't emphasize enough how many employees to recruit, to competitively recruit and retain employees going forward, we have got to be able to adjust wages. I'd also note that the performance contract of the History Museum hasn't grown in seven years. And so that two thousand fifteen, that buying power of one point one five billion in two thousand fifteen is now worth only nine hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars of buying power at fifteen twenty-two dollars. Um, so we are, and, and, you know, we have a staff that in, in this period, in this same seven-year period, and, and really just in the last two years, the History Museum has been expanding operations. So at the same time that that kind of buying power is diminishing every year, the History Museum is expanding operations, one with regaining management of Fort Conde, and also with now preparing to operate the African Town Heritage House. And we have a full staff of researchers and collections management specialists and, um, curators and exhibit designers and public historians and educators that are all working to bring the African Town Heritage House online, laser focused on that, and we have got to be able to retain those employees and to continue to recruit, competitively recruit employees.
Question. Um, how much of the one million dollars is, I'm sorry, how much of the four thirty-five is set aside for new employees at the Heritage?
So if this money is going to, um, it's about three hundred thousand is going to support the employees that are currently working to bring this online. And so as I said, it is almost the full staff that is kind of working, not only to bring the Heritage House online, but also to keep the doors of the museum open. Um, and, and that's really kind of where we are in, in terms of that.
So the additional funding is not for just the History Museum, but it's also for the Heritage House that's out in African Town, and also for the additional staff that was at Fort Conde but not a part of the History Museum itself. So the increase in that money for salaries and personnel shows the increased responsibility taken on by the History Museum, correct?
Exactly. Exactly.
Mr. Jones, your question?
Uh, one other question. How much funding has been brought in by grants or other donors outside of just the operating budget being had from the city?
So the city's budget accounts for about seventy, sometimes seventy-five percent of the museum's budget, annual operating budget. Um, so that is about five hundred thousand in a year. Um, there have been, last year, there were two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in new grants, new revenue lines, things that had not, um, previously existed. The, you know, the thing about that is, funders don't want to fund personnel expenses. You know, we can, we have real, you know, we're pulling our weight in terms of getting funding from outside sources. We're increasing grants, increasing, um, additional revenue sources, but that personnel money is really where we are just in a critical moment, again, to be able to competitively recruit and retain staff.
Oh, well, Mr. Jones.
Yeah.
If, if the increase in personnel is not granted, does that mean that we have a Heritage House in African Town that has no one out there to manage it?
Precisely. I mean, it means that we are, we are threatening our ability to execute that severely.
Mr. Dave is in his group. Hold on, Mr. Dave, that came from you. Go ahead, Dave.
And Paul, I'd just like to say that I thank you and your staff, our child over there. I asked, I was, um, I'm not critical of, um, the operation of the History Museum, but under your leadership, far as I'm concerned, the organization has been completely turned around. And, uh, I think, I think you and your organization are doing a great job. I want, I certainly want to see the people that work for you be compensated in a similar manner as those who work for the city. Uh, I, I personally think that the way of fifteen, whatever it is, dollar, I think is a really wage. Of course, if we provide that to our employees, I appreciate the mayor for making the first step to make sure that our city employees are paying that wage. I think supporting the African Town Heritage Museum is extremely important as we go forward. So I, I'm, I'm fully supportive of, of this increase in funding.
Ms. Berger. Dan, Mr. Karen.
I was just nodding my head in agreement because I, I know the African Town Heritage House will be managed by your staff, and I agree with what Mr. Dave has said. He often done a terrific job. Now, since you come on, I mean, things really have turned around tremendously. Your board is very active and engaged in everything that they do. So, like Mr. Dave, I support this increase because you need it. In order to do what it is, we have asked you all to do it. So thank you.
Karen.
No further questions, Mr. President.
Right. Mr. President, um, so this is, uh, these are, these are new facts that have been supplied to us. It could be helpful to, the her- the museum is a private, is a separate corporation from the city. Is that, is that correct? That's how it's structured?
The board is, um.
Go ahead.
Created by an ordinance of the city council, um, obviously appointed by the city council and incorporated.
We don't have any city employees or staff at the History Museum. I think it would be helpful, especially to me, I know the Muggles Museum of Art, they came in leading up to the budget and did a slideshow and slide, you know, showed us the operations and the breakdown of responsibility and who does what, and they're outside funding how much they raise, which they raise, raise an extraordinary amount of money. And, um, it helps give line of sight to, you know, what's going on, what the taxpayers getting out of their investment. Although it is on display, you have done a fantastic job at the History Museum, in my opinion, of putting on a great display. So I think it would be helpful to have that presentation or something similar to that put on for us so that we know what the taxpayer is getting for this additional four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. It's, it's been discussed, sort of in private conversation, just generally that it's going to raise as well as it, is it getting somebody who's making, say, a hundred thousand dollars, another twenty-five thousand dollars, or is it going to people who are making seven dollars and making them fifteen dollars an hour? We just have no idea, a lot of sight to it. So, um, that, you know, raises my antenna of why are we doing it?
Be happy to provide that information and give that to the presentation.
And how much going to the Heritage House? That's been raised, right? The Heritage House, uh, is an important asset to the city and this community and everyone else, and it's certainly something the taxpayers should play a role in, of how much of this four hundred thirty-five thousand is actually going to that? You know, is that really going to defund or put them at risk? I mean, we should be able to see that and make a decision for ourselves as to whether or not the funding is adequate there, or if maybe there's some other funding opportunities that may present themselves along the way. You know, we just, I don't have any idea. We're just guessing.
What else?
Yeah, on a separate issue, on, uh, your fifth proposal there to, um.
Thank you.
Transfer the, the general fund, or transfer from capital fund a million dollars. I know a little bit of that, I've had discussions with the chief of staff on, and appreciate y'all digging and finding that. Um, what I don't want to do is lock that in to a, a specific ditch maintenance thing or, I, I think what we really need in, is an assessment, and I know there's an assessment going on. I don't know what that cost is, and, and to look at that, we got the ditch map this week, and Lisa, if you'll put up this, and to this point, I, I think this will sort of lay out my thoughts. Go to the first picture, right there. All right, so this is from the ditch map that I got this week, and that line indicates a city ditch that they're responsible for. Um, and that is eastside heading north toward South Alabama. Go to the next picture. All right, this is to the west side. That is the ditch that the city says they are responsible for. Go to the next picture. This is just to the other side of the bridge, and that's not on the city map that they're responsible for. Go to the next picture. And as you back up, there's, there we go. That's the bridge. So according to the map that I have, the ditch to the left is city responsibility. The ditch to the right is not city responsibility, which makes no sense to me at all. Go to the next picture, please. I got a call from a widow woman who says that the city came out and maintained this ditch seven years ago, and they haven't been back since. It's not on the city map. Um, you see the crane at the end sticking up. That, that's a drain, and that drain is completely full, and it probably has been for some time. You can't see, there's another chair at the end that a homeless person was actually there as a restitutor when we walked back there. Didn't like, but that's a whole other story for another day. To the right, her fence was damaged because all this debris, when it rained, pushed through her fence, and now she has to pay for. So when, when we look at an assessment, this is why, to me, that is so important, because I, I don't think what we have right now makes sense, and it raises a lot of questions in the minds of our constituents, is, you know, what, what's the city responsibility, what's not? And, and as we do this, I, I think some of this fund, uh, has got to lay out the requirement, you know, and as we do that, um, again, we need to figure out what that cost, and I want to make sure we're budgeted for that. So next year, when we have this discussion, we know what the budget should look like with regards to number one, repair on ditches, and number two, maintenance. I've asked Peter Toller to come. Is he here?
Yeah, he's right there.
Hey, Peter, didn't see you. Can you come up for a second? Because in line with this, when you look at our, our agenda item of the day, zero eight seven seven two, uh, we're spending a hundred and nine thousand dollars to trees on Dalton Street. Um, Peter, do we have an idea of, of all the trees that we have in the city? You know, like, we're doing an assessment for ditches, and we're talking about that. Do we have an inventory list for trees?
We have a partial inventory. I, part of it was conducted back in the day, and my staff throughout the year, whenever we go to a, a service request or we'll mark it typically on that, but we do not have a complete inventory.
What would it cost to do? Do you have any idea what it, what it would cost to lay it out?
The estimates that were given to me were roughly six hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. So, yeah, I, I think that needs to be budgeted for us to do that, and the importance of that, again, how can we budget if we don't know what the requirement is to take care of the trees that are failing, and then to come up with a, a maintenance plan, I'm assuming that'd be a two, three, or four-year plan, for you to go through and lay out a plan for the city?
You, you can actually, with a complete inventory, uh, plan up to ten years.
Okay. So, but that would lead to, I mean, we've got a five-year plan for the city, we've got the five-year street plan, we've got to do the same thing for ditches, we've got to do the same thing for trees, and then I think we can actually understand where that budget needs to be for these items, and then I think it will clear out a lot of the confusion and, and the angst that I see week over week with the constituents. So is, is that something that makes sense to you, Peter, from a tree perspective?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I'm, I'm not going to belay that, but I, I think we've got to look at, at that million dollars going into an overall assessment, and let's get this thing right from the beginning so we can really address this thing a year and give the administration time to, to react to that and figure out where do we really need to be? Because right now, we're, I, I think the last three years, we've given back fifteen million dollars in, in underfunded, uh, underspent in public works, the, the works there, um, that needs to be done, and I, I know a lot of that is due to salaries, um, but I, I think that shows we've got some process issues with contracting and getting subcontracting and getting after these things that we're looking at. But the first step has got to be getting these assessments done and understanding what our start point is, and I don't think we're there yet. So that, I, I think we definitely need to get after it. So six hundred thousand for the tree piece, and then we need to know what that looks like for the ditch piece, um, and, and do it at that assessment. So I think that's the start point.
Just saying, spend a million dollars on, on planning, I'm going to hire somebody to plan this up yourself?
It's not, it's to do an assessment, to identify the requirement. So what, what that would, would, would be is for whoever, the layout to the forestry folks, here's all the trees that we have, here's the condition of those trees, here's the ones that needed immediate need, and here's the ones that we're going to maintain, and what that would look like for three, four, five, whatever, and, and I'm not an expert in that, but they'd be able to lay out a maintenance plan of what it would cost year over year on a budget. Same thing with the, the ditches. Have, you know, right now, we don't know what all the ditches, the requirements are, and if we don't know what the requirements are, how can we budget against something that we don't have an understanding of? You know, what, what the true need is, and, and we're throwing money at things, but we don't have any type of idea of, you know, what, what a priority is and, and, you know, what. what needs work now. And so, it's just getting a ground zero state of where we are, what the need is, what the requirement is, and then being able to work on a, a long-term budget, just like we do with the five-year street plan, and, and, you know, build mobile plan with your five-year plan. It's the same thing with the ditches and, and the tree canopies that we have, the stump grinding, et cetera, to, to just figure out where the priorities are and do the maintenance plan associated with that.
Question again, you want to take a million dollars, it could be spent cleaning ditches and cutting trees on the major rideways, and you want to put it in planning this year so that we know for the future how, how to cut them?
Absolutely.
Okay. Mr. President. Ron. That wasn't my idea of this, although I appreciate Mr. Jones' concern with the issue, just as it is mine. Good things. Good things are, we've got a stormwater plan that we're going to have here before too long, it's going to help guide us, okay? We've got a brand-new public works director in Mark, who is jumping in headfirst, and he's going to tackle this with a plan, you know, internal planning and all that. I understand, understand that we could hire an outside professional to do that, but I think we've got a fairly good handle on where we're falling short now. My thought on this is to fund those efforts that we already have underway using the stormwater plan that, that we hired somebody to produce, Mark's effort with all his team, Colonel Delap and everyone else, who's aware of the issue, Nick, and put a million dollars towards actually doing the work, instead of delaying it further. Let's go ahead and start it, a million dollars is enough, but we can find ourselves anywhere in this budget where it ain't enough. So, my idea would be to, let's kick it off, let's get it started, put a million dollars towards actually doing the work, and then, as things progress, we'll uncover more issues and know when we have to put capital investment into it to improve or make it flow better. So, that's my thought.
Question. Karen.
Celia, I asked you guys for an optimized breakdown of the budget, both capital and general fund. Can you just recall from the fact, or from memory, the amount of money that's in the line item currently for routine maintenance of ditches and those types of things?
You want the line item?
Just give me the general amount. I know what the number is, I want you to answer it.
What is the number?
I'm sorry, I don't have that with me. It's in the presentation we gave.
That's right. So, we have already a set amount of money that we use every year for ditch maintenance. We also have a SWIP. So, he said that we just hired somebody to do a new SWIP. I'm, I'm not, not aware of that, because from what I understand, our stormwater management plan is already in effect because it governs everything that everybody does around the town, including contractors with rip wrapping water intrusion off sites, rainwater, water into inlets, and also trash that goes into them as too. So, I, I was confused with a new stormwater management plan. I don't know where that came from. I thought we had one already.
Maybe Jim, if you, if you, stormwater assessment, I think, I think there's one that's underway that's near completion.
Yeah. Well, no, I think what you're, we're kind of talking two separate things here, so...
He, he says stormwater management plan.
Right, so you...
So, we have a SWIP in place.
That's right. So, what, what Councilman Reynolds, and I believe Councilman Jones is talking about, having an outside consultant, much like we did the pavement assessment that was done years ago, which is our guiding document for which roads we pave and what sequence, based on a grading, is take our GIS maps of our drainage system, and then go do a detailed assessment on those systems to determine which is the most urgent need and priority, and then what would be the cost to do that. That would help then shape future. So, I think that's separate than the stormwater management plan, that the city uses as a whole to, to manage, you know, stormwater throughout.
What, what's that cost?
We don't know, to do what I just described, don't know. I mean, I would, I would venture, it would probably be a couple hundred thousand dollars, but I just don't know. You know, we'd have to, we'd have to get some proposals by consultants.
But does that cost include any of the requests that he's asking for in this one million dollars?
It's, I, I've heard of Councilman Reynolds.
We don't know.
That's, that's not mine.
Yeah, but we don't know.
He gets what's to do after the work, that's all he gets to get at.
If, if we're getting after the work, then there's no need to pay a million dollars to someone to come and do an assessment.
That's right.
We need to pay money to get the work done.
That's right.
So, this line item, we need to be, it needs to be clearly understood what money's we're already spending to, to get the plan together and understanding of what needs to be done. Then, we can appropriately place money to get the work done, because there's money in the budget year after year after year to do some of the work that you're talking about. Now, how fast they get to the items that you're requesting, maybe why you're wanting to draw this extra million dollars over there, and how quickly they get to? Because I'm, I'm looking at that ditch up there, and if that's a dirty ditch, you need to come see someone. I'm two sides sixty-five.
That's not a dirty ditch. That is a ditch, that's one of many, that is not a dirty ditch.
But I can have the push crew fix that.
There, there's six foot of stuff down there. Look, here's the problem. We're missing...
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not picking on it, and I, and I'm not trying to say that, that there's value in the effort of moving this money here at all. I mean, I might be forward, I, I just want a clear understanding of what it is, or what the line item is doing, and that, that we're not double dipping and adding additional money to somebody that's already programmed, what you're asking.
And, and there's the whole issue, and why I brought this up, and I think Ben completely missed it, it's not about throwing mud on the lawn, seeing what sticks. And, and we keep spending money year over year over years, and we're never getting to the root of the problem, because we don't know the entirety of the problem that exists in the city. What we're doing is completely reactive. When somebody calls in a complaint, we go take care of it, and we never know the extent of the problem that we're dealing with. And I think I could put Peter Toller right back up there, he's head of the tree division, and he would tell us that he is, everything he's doing right now with the money that we have provided is taking care of the immediate emergencies without ever getting to the maintenance that's required, which continues to put us backwards, and, and we're not addressing that, and we keep skipping over that, and it, it's got to be addressed.
If that's the question, then the question to ask is, uh, guys in that department, what's the value of routine maintenance every year?
We're not doing it.
Uh, but what's the value of routine maintenance every year? I know that we prune trees down government street, but we don't, but we don't get them all. I know that we miss trees on other streets, like we talked about last week. So, what's that value? And does that value do everything that we need to do on a yearly basis? Can somebody ask that question before ten thirty, maybe? And, and one more thing, we want to agree with Ben's position here, and some of these are going to draw questions that are, that may not be answered before ten thirty, and may not be able to involve, I might be able to postpone the voting on that for a week, maybe too.
Mr. Gregory.
First of all, as far as postponing the overall budget, I will not be here next week, whether that means anything to you guys or not, is up for discussion. But the longer you postpone the budget, of course, we will be violated along, and we will be having to, of course, operate under the old budget. That being said, I have some questions about number five, and I had understood, if we ended this, if there might be an amendment for the maintenance, that's what we have talked about, reducing the economic development to put some money into some of these, what I would consider more miscellaneous needs, not capital needs, because there were so many that we'd get calls for all the time, which would include the, the ditch maintenance, minor repairs, right-way mowing, cleaning, stump grinding, and of course, the big one that I've been talking about is trying to build the potholes to do a better job of keeping our streets from being like speed breakers, because we have so many potholes that we have to continually fill out and rebuild all the time, which, of course, it might require us to purchase a milling machine, who knows? But it's, it's a discussion we need to have in order to figure these things out. And I would be in favor of this reduction if we could determine exactly what that was going to be used for, and again, I thought it was more of the miscellaneous needs for some of these improvements that we keep getting the 3-1-1 reports on, and the council members particularly, here, as does the mayor's office. So, in that respect, maybe we need to broaden, where it says item for ditch maintenance to other needs, if we need to do that. And, and I understand where Mr. Jones is coming from, you know, we do need to know where all these issues are. I think in many, many ways, if we will go back and look at our 3-1-1 reports, we will see exactly where all the needs are, and it changes. Every time it rains, things change in the ditches. Every time we have wind, things change on the living of the tree. So, what is needed today may change tomorrow, and I know it's a snapshot in time. Overall, yes, I think that a planning is certainly needed. I don't know that putting this million dollars toward that rather than knowing after all these other needs is the direction that we go now, hopefully.
Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two things. First is that while I agree, excuse me, while I, while I agree that we might do a better job, in terms of trimming the trees and cleaning the ditches, I, I'm not sure that we can have a proactive plan of doing that. Everything we do now is reactive, and we can hardly keep up with it on a reactive basis. I think, I, I, I'm not sure if we had a plan for cleaning ditches or a plan for cutting the thousands and thousands and thousands of trees we have in the city, that we would be able to make any dent in that plan without devoting so much money to it that it wouldn't make any sense. You know, we have an old tired drainage system in the city, and drainage projects cost millions and millions of dollars. And when we get one of these, you know, three, four times a year, we get one of these four-inch downpour, so we get three inches of rain in and out. And whenever that happens, we get streets, we have streets, we get calls about the streets we get, but I'm telling you, there is no municipal drainage system in the world that can handle that kind of rain. And it would take us billions, key billions of dollars to create a system like that, even, even if we could in a swamp, which is the city's then. So, I think, I, I, can we do a better job? Yes. Are we ever going to be able to get ahead of it? I don't think so. I don't understand that we're going to get there. Now, as far as the lane revision goes, my experience has been with the lane revision is it doesn't make it easier, it makes it more complicated. As the longer you delay it, the more issues come up, and the more you start hearing, the more, well, how about this, how about this, how about this? I myself am going to be gone later on in the year, and I, I'd just like to go ahead and, and get the budget done. We've, you know, we've had the budget now for what, three weeks, Mr. Holt, three or four weeks?
Since the twentieth of August.
Well, since the twentieth of August. We've had an opportunity with the administration, we received rings of information, and I just don't know why we can't go ahead and vote on the budget today.
Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
This has been, I, I think, complicated more than it should be as far as ditch maintenance goes. This is a million dollar set aside to equip the professionals that deal with ditch maintenance with enough money so that they can get the job done, where they're not constrained by the money in the, the account to say, well, we can't clean ditch over here, we can't clean ditch over there because we don't have sufficient funding. This is a, an immediate mandate to fix. That's all it is, and, and like Mr. Dave says, and like many other folks agree, million dollars, just like with tree trimming, it's just not enough, and it, and it likely never will be enough. But this is to kick that off and say, okay, let's, let's direct our attention, our focus to it, here's a big pot of money to task the city with of addressing the issue. That's simply, that's all it is. It's not, it's not milling roads or whatever, although if someone would like to make amendment to this amendment, or amendment to the budget in some other way, I am totally open to, to considering that. But now's the opportunity to get the money in the pots so that we can prioritize in the right way that we want, you know, that the people want, people want.
One last thing, you guys voted us down, whether you wanted to, you want to go today, you go today, we want to go in two weeks, but we can go in two weeks. Once upon a time, when you were still in high school, when John Bell ran over, and we had more ditches than we can keep up with, and we kept sticking money and cleaning those ditches, didn't matter how much money we stuck over there, it was personnel and a number of people that we had to respond to the ditch issues. We would clean one ditch one, one year, and it'd be two years before we could get back to it. It may appear as if though we were not taking care of the ditches, we just didn't have enough people to get to stay on it constantly. Cleaning ditches is like cutting your grass at home. If you don't do constant maintenance on it with somebody constantly doing it, then you're going to always have an opportunity to resolve that. So, no matter how much money you throw at it, it's all about in the process of maintenance. And a million dollars didn't push a grain of sand when it comes to routine maintenance on these ditches. So, just think about it that way.
How, Mr. President? I don't disagree with anything you said.
Where, however, wherever it goes, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm not challenging you, I'm just giving you a little bit of historic data on, on this process in over all the years that ditch cleaning has been going on. Suzie Ansley out in Platteau behind First Total, I mean, it's been an issue forever. You know, I've got hundreds of them, that are a thousand percent worse shape than what we see up there, that are not just a drainage swell, but are some are 10, 15, 20-foot deep, that go on for quarter of a mile, that need help. So, I, I mean, we're just not going to put a dent in it, but if that's what this body chooses to do, then we'll solve it.
Ms. Gregory, then, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, Ben, I appreciate your willingness to broaden the, the scope of this, because I think, again, these are miscellaneous things, they are not the capital needs, and we spend millions and millions of dollars on ditch repair, which of course, we're explaining that out there as well. But if we broaden this to say ditch maintenance, right-way mowing, stump grinding, pothole repairs, all that sort of thing, we could also use this money for some contracts that we have out there already with the mowers, possibly, something like that, to help get at some of these problems that, you know, we're still having. So, if you'd be willing to broaden the language on that, I would...
Get up on first, Scott.
Mr. Jones.
Uh, I, because Gina may have pointed to that, Ms. Gregory, and if you notice, I have somewhat tried to account for at least right-way mowing in some of my other amendments, because as Ben brought up several times, a million dollars just ain't enough there, and ditch maintenance, to address ditch maintenance, that there's an additional need for right-way mowing, even milling, which I, I didn't account for that, but if you look at some of my other amendments on amendment two, I'm sorry, amendment three, it moves money into right-way mowing. Then a part of amendment four also moves money into right-way mowing, and then a hundred thousand dollars into stump grinding as well. So, I tried to account for those other categories with other money. So, but I, you know, if, if somebody wants to make an amendment, again, I, I'm all ears.
Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I just, we talk about prioritization of these ditches. How you going to do it? I mean, everybody sitting at this table has got dozens of ditches that need to get done, and it's something we ought to know about. And to say that there's cities out there that don't do proactive maintenance on ditches is not accurate. There's a ditch in a neighborhood across from me, hadn't been maintained, probably would have cost $3,000. The city's going to spend $300,000 fixing it because we didn't do it when it needed to be done. To sit there and say that we don't need a comprehensive plan to lay out requirements for the trees and, and the ditches, let the experts answer that. I don't know what the answer is, because I've talked to them, and it's absolutely ridiculous to continue to throw a budget together and try and get after things when you have no clue what prioritizations are. And we keep having things just like that. How is that a city ditch seven years ago and it's not a city ditch today? How do you answer that, constituent? What about the first one that I showed up, where the left side's the city and the right side's not the city's? How do you answer that? Well, according to this, let's just keep doing that as normal. That's the definition of insanity, folks. Doing the same thing over and over and over again expecting a, a different result. That makes no sense. And when I go and talk to the constituents and have to tell them, the city came out there and did it seven years ago, but now it's not on the district map for ditches. How do you swing it? It's not the right answer. I was going to put an amendment up, pull because Ben was putting two hundred thousand from the history museum to V R R for mental health work. That's not gonna pass. So I'm gonna present an amendment to reduce the performance contract off the point. They've got a performance contract for six hundred thousand. I would like to reduce that six hundred thousand by two hundred thousand to give the same scope of work to V R R. Uh, V R R has the capability to do the work. Part of the scope of work in that contract is to develop standard operating procedures and best practices. I think it's ludicrous to do that in a certified body. And I think that should be spread across multiple mental health professionals that are coming up with standard operating procedures. So I would hope that you would support spreading that work out and giving some of that to another qualified, certified, um, organization.
Question, question on, on this amendment. God, I can't remember this. But somebody needs to check the, I think it was a mandatory funding of Altapoy by the state or something years ago. Am I, am I?
This is separate.
Am I remembering that wrong or is this separate from that?
This is separate from that. This is a special performance contract from the city to Altapoy to do mental health stuff with the, the judicial system, make initial assessments.
What's the value of that?
Six hundred thousand.
And how much are we giving Altapoy directly? I can't remember this, but I think my first term, I tried to do the same thing and I was told that Altapoy had to be given some kind of.
I don't know.
Is that? What's, what's going on?
There was a grant through the police department, we got a grant for Altapoy. That might be what you're thinking about. That partnership, which the bulk of that money did go to Altapoy, fifty thousand to train you for police officers, another fifty thousand, thank the university hospital.
So this is the, that's new money with the mental health training with arresting people in the field, right?
That's correct.
He's talking about the six hundred thousand, you're talking about.
It's the same thing. It's, that's a performance contract. That's an allocation out of our general fund, not a grant. The, the other one was a grant. I, I think it was close to six hundred thousand.
Young Mr. Carr.
Yeah, I just couldn't remember and I, I want to be able to look it up before ten thirty, but I don't think I can. And that might be another reason why we need to wait two weeks until Gina gets back.
Mr. Penn.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. Um, I don't mind laying, but all I think is it's important as ever to talk about, um, even though we had three weeks. That's challenging when you have to look through a budget without, you know, having to move people to break everything down. Um, already, so I'm fine with that. But, um, of course, I honestly am the smartest person in the room. But I'm sitting in this sometimes and it's just kinda, it's amazing when I add all the numbers up. It kinda equals to two point six million dollars. We sitting here talking about two point six million dollars. Which all go helping our community, our city get stronger and better. Talking about two point six million dollars. And when I say we, I'm gonna say my, I'm gonna include myself in this. We have to do a better job. This has been taken care of before we even got in this situation with this budget. I think that we have to come together and let's talk about what we want to see in our community as council, as administration. This is two point six million and it will go to benefiting the city regardless. Investing back in the city. I just encourage next year that we do it better. We do it better by sitting and talking to each person, asking, what would you like to see? And maybe just add two point six million dollars to the budget. Thank you, Mr. Penn.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, just make a comment. When the budgets are turned in initially, it's up to the department heads, the directors, the executive directors to give us a budget. Uh, and it's in excess of fifteen million dollars. I think it's actually more than that, the city's recollection is fifteen million dollars that we're out. There was fifteen million dollars requested that we didn't have enough income for. And so, uh, for the counselor's, Penn's comment, we need to do a better job of that. I can't tell you the number of meetings that were held to try to pare down that fifteen million dollars. It wasn't just thrown up against the wall. It was every executive director, every director, department head trying to find that fifteen million dollars. So as we balance the budget, you happen to take away from somebody to give it to another department. I mean, it's just, it's not an easy process. Um, and so what was been presented to you is what we think is a, a balance, knowing that we do not have enough money to do the things that Peter would like to do tree, tree trimming. That, uh, Mark would like to do ditch cut. Okay? It's like Councilman, uh, said, that going back to William Bill. I mean, um, um, that it's just a huge challenge. This is not the first time we've had a problem with ditches. When we came the same, eight years ago, I'm being elected, it was a difficult conversation because of the neglect. That comes because of personnel changing over, comes because of having worn out equipment. And that was probably what was happening back then. But you know, we've had two years of COVID, okay? It led up to this. So did that have anything to do with us not cutting ditches? I can tell you it had a lot to do with everybody working, okay? And so I would suggest, I'd like to make this comment to you. We, we embrace the idea of having a plan of what we should do with the trees and the, um, and the, uh, ditches. Uh, but I would ask that you let us give it a shot internally and coming up with that plan, present to you. Uh, Mark is new on board. We certainly have what, uh, the planning, the ability that the term of the lap brought with him. I believe that we have the ability to present a plan to you that whereby we will be able to keep up with these ditches. This is a very unusual year, okay? Um, and that amount of rainfall we've had and the equipment problems, the change of personnel. But I'll say this, um, to Councilman Jones, how in the world can this be a ditch this year and not be a city ditch another year? While I'm being elected, we went out to Africa Town because they were, this was eight years ago. We went and cut a ditch that hadn't been cut in years because of the, the hue and the crowd and nobody's ever been cutting this ditch. We went out there and unbeknown to us, it was not a city ditch. But we spent two weeks cleaning it up. We were the first ones to clean it. So if you go ask anybody that lives on that ditch, they will tell you the city cleaned up that ditch, which leads you to believe that it is a city ditch. But I get that, okay? Now, have we made a mistake on the map in the past where we don't identify a city? Uh, yes, we can do that too. And I, I don't want to over promise what we can do. But we, we will take the resources that are available and direct them to the best of our ability, the most effective way. But I would say that next year we can come up with a plan, see how we do. And Councilman, um, Jones, we, possibly if we have failed in the next year, then, then we do allocate the money. It concerns me a little bit about taking a million dollars when I can look, you write down any of our major cars. And all you do is look up and look at the trees that are being hit by, by trucks, okay? So we need to be spending money yesterday on these major thoroughfares, you know, raising them up. Um, so if you were to move the money, uh, I would suggest that, uh, you move the money and put it in the public works department, which is gonna be ditch cleaning, mowing and tree trimming. Uh, and take the million dollars, I mean, you came to us, expressed the, the desire to do something, that you wanted more money spent there. We told you where you could get a million dollars, okay? That we did not think it would be painful. And that was to take it out of economic development. That is the easiest money to move and put it in public works. Uh, and I can just assure you, as I'm sitting here looking at you with the media and everybody listening, you know, that that money will be spent in those areas. And we won't go, because even if you move the money, we have still got to make the decision of how to deploy it. So I'm telling you that we will deploy it in a manner that I hope will be pleasing in your sight. We'll give you updated reports on it on an ongoing basis. So that would be my comment. I really, unless y'all have something else that we haven't said about ditches, uh, we'd be glad to, you know, listen more, but, but we've heard you loud and clear.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, when, when I said we could do it better, it wasn't towards the administration. When I put we, that's all of us. Now, you, um, I think the administration had put out a, a hundred day, like a grade assessment. What do you call that?
The Hundred Day Plan.
Hundred day, well, I'm saying it was a grade assessment. You had like a B, A, what, what's that called?
That's the Hundred Day Plan.
It's a grading.
A grading for the Hundred Day Plan.
Scorecard.
A scorecard, thank you. That was the name I was looking for. I think I saw a hundred on it. So if you don't make a hundred, I always tell my, my kids, when I teach them, they come in and say, ooh, I did a great job. I say, you could do better. This is on Mr. Penn? I made an eighty-nine. I say, you didn't make a hundred. That mean you always can do better. So when I made that statement that we can do better, that meaning that as a council, the department heads had an opportunity for months to look at a budget and prepare. We, we get the blunder. See, I'm in the community every day. They gonna see me at boys and girls club, they gonna see me at church in my district, they gonna see me at the grocery store, they gonna see me at every football game. And we hearing complaints. And then we have three weeks to sit and say, okay, now let's approve a budget that we're gonna get the hits for. And so I believe that just to me, just Ben, uh, uh, just on a better perspective, it would be great to maybe hear what Councilman Reynolds would like to see. Maybe hear, just like the department heads, kinda include us in it with some challenges that we're receiving. That's what I mean by better. And I believe better is also working with the administration, not just putting everything on administration. So, and, and when I used to work better, I believe we all can do it better. And if we, if we're not making a one hundred, then that mean we can get better. And so that's my ultimate goal. When I look at this, I just feel like sometimes we be, we going around the bush and we can look at other ways that we can handle this situation before we get here. So when I say better, I include myself as well. Thank you, Mr. Penn.
And what else?
Yeah, one, I'll make one, one comment, and that is, that's what this amendment process is for. That I agree with Councilman Penn. We, we lay out our priorities by way, we, we get the, the budget from the department heads and everybody who knows this way better than we do because they deal with it every single day. Finance director, chief of staff, everybody. They lay out what they see as their priority for the upcoming year. Then we, by way of amendment, try to align our priorities with their priorities. And I, I feel like that's what I've put forward here is I wanna align my priorities in this way with these amendments. Um, and floor is open for additional amendments. Councilman Jones has one in writing that he's gonna submit. Um, so, you know, it's a matter of just getting it all together and something that can pass and get the votes necessary and moving forward with it. So that's what this process is for, in my opinion.
Council, we are about twenty minutes before ten thirty.
Question. The one eighty-nine reduction to the historic development personnel, what effect does that have on that department schedule?
Um, real quickly, we have, uh, six employees. They're all filled positions. Um, that includes the deputy director, secretary, three, uh, architectural, uh, surveyors. And then we have, um, a project manager for a digitization project, which was, uh, in part grant funded to help us, um, with our very massive filing system. So the lion's share of that budget is to support, um, personnel. So a reduction of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars would have impact to the six employees there. Um, just to give you a historical note, the, we've downsized that department pretty significantly over the last several years due to attrition. So, um, in addition to what you're probably most familiar with by way of their support of the architectural review board. Um, that staff is, um, constitutes our certified local government, which gives us the ability to apply for grants through the state. Um, most recently, one that we executed on was the, um, the national register district for the Clotilda. So it's through that staff, their professional expertise, that we are supporting numerous tax credit, um, historic tax credit projects throughout the city in the form of redevelopment. They support and maintain our seven locally designated, um, historic districts. And they're also the ones that put forth national nominations to the state and federal government for the recognition of new districts. And some historically that have been recognized beyond, uh, the Clotilda landmark, the Africa Town Historic District, the campground, um, and several others. So, uh, that would be a severe impact to that, that professional staff.
Would the loss of these personnel hinder us from documenting the historic structures that we're trying to take pictures of and catalog now?
Um, yes, they are part of that inventory process and they actually are the ones that go out in the field, um, and assist with the, um, it's development of that inventory.
And these are areas that currently not are under historic register, but we're trying to get their Africa Town in a campground, correct?
Yes, sir.
In order to do that, we have to photograph and catalog those properties.
Right.
And by cutting this one eighty-nine, that would stop us in our trajectory to do that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jones.
I, I gotta ask how? Because this one eighty-nine is an increase over, that takes it back down to level funding. So in my mind, we've been doing that successfully, but now we want to increase that a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. So it's not adding past in the scope of work. It's scope of work that we've already been doing, we're increasing funding. So I'm, I'm not sure I understand how that would stop if we've already been doing it for a lesser amount of money.
Prior, prior to the execution of the Africa Town, uh, historic recognition for the Clotilda, we were understaffed. And we've just gotten back, um, to a staffing level where we can continue to, um, follow up and solidify our arrangement as a certified local government. And we had been contacted by the state on numerous occasions, asking about our staffing levels to ensure that we're able to, um, follow up on that, on a, on that agreement with the state.
So this one eighty-nine is an added position?
I'm not sure where, when you reference the one eighty, one eighty-nine, what you're referencing.
It's my, I can provide clarity. It's, it's my, my amendment. It goes from level funding back to actual expenses in twenty twenty-one. That's where the hundred and eighty-nine thousand came from. From year of twenty twenty-one to this proposed budget, the budget is increased from actual to budgeted by a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. And I understand why it has increased. We had an outside funding source, an additional funding source that was a temporary funding source that came in and fulfilled and was able to allow this department to grow. Now it's up to us to decide if we want to continue to fund those positions in this department. And I'm not saying that we should lay people off as a result of this, that's certainly not my goal. I'm just saying that they need to be reallocated to an area where I see immediate concern. Not immediate concern is in municipal enforcement. And, um, so it, it kinda goes hand in hand with each other, uh, for personnel to be moved from one department to the other. That's where this came from. And I, and it may, a hundred and eighty-nine, three ninety-nine, maybe that's not the right number, but I, I can't account for the merit increases and all that. I just don't have the ability to do all of that. So, again, the floor is open to make an amendment or amend this amendment to make sure that your priority. to make sure that your priorities align with everyone else's.
Uh, Commissioner Throgo Salt again. For much, everybody's been talking about annexation, talking about getting over two hundred thousand people, thousand people to open the door for new grants and new opportunities for one-time contributions to the city and items that don't last forever. So when the city grows and we get that one-time contribution, it goes away. The city's gonna have to reappropriate money from the budget to maintain those services. Prime example right now, shop spire, shop spire. So we've grown with two positions to cover a need, now we have to fulfill that spot, but we're not able to fulfill that other spot because it has funding source. So when we grow, and this happens again, I want you to remember that when it comes to budget time, when it comes to refunding those spots after.
Thank you, Mr. Pr, uh, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Carr, for the reminder, that there will be a reminder. Um, I, again, this is about priorities. What, what do you want to prioritize your city to be like? I put mine forward, they don't align, I understand. And everybody else has that same opportunity, but I hope you support them, I think these are all reasonable amendments. And again, I think there's still more that should be discussed, not just with these amendments, but maybe someone else now, after we've had this fruitful discussion, would like to offer something additionally? And because of that, Mr. President, I, I hope that we have the votes to carry this over at least one.
Well, well, we don't, I'm, I'm sorry, but we don't wanna leave Jenna out, so.
Two weeks.
Right, and we're on ten till October first, Mr. President.
Counsel, um, ten seventeen, my recommendation, as I'm sensing from at least four councilmembers, is to hold the budget over. Uh, Mr. Dave, if it's, if y'all think it might be possible to have a committee meeting next Tuesday, if needed be, let's have it next Tuesday and let's vote on the budget in two more weeks from today. Do we need another meeting next Tuesday?
Well, if you're gonna have all these questions about the amendments and trying to get explanations from all of these different departments, I would say, you know, otherwise you're gonna have the same questions.
I have one possible amendment, two, that it's a performance contract that was thirty-five thousand dollars in performance power for an after-school program, and I don't know if it was used or not, I couldn't get an answer back from the school yet, so.
Mr. Dave, you can just give us time for this Tuesday, because we have a committee meeting, uh, I prefer immediately after the council meeting, but, uh, it's up to you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Carr?
Um, this is a policy issue, and redefine, redefining the Central Business District, uh, allows, uh, development, uh, this is also tied to the RDA, I've been talking to all of you guys about downtown redevelopment authority, but it allows just about every council member to take and use the RDA in respect, in their respective districts. It reaches everybody that can possibly reach. And that's why redefining it, the area helps us, it doesn't just help district two, it helps everybody. Now, the thing is, is we're gonna have to amend this because I don't want it to affect any other language or any other definition of the Central D- Business District in other sections of municipal code. So it'll only be in respect to what we're doing right here, so. And, and that's it basically simply, just preparing for an opportunity down the road to use capital money for revitalization in census tracts that count, you know, one, two, three, four, five. Well, you don't have any census tracts that fit out in District Six, but you can still be within reach with the redefinition of the Central Business District, if you have wanted to. It works, you can do it, because you'll be within three miles of profile, as a profile.
Sorry?
I've got, uh, when it was introduced, I later found out there was other definitions of Central Business District in the, uh, various aspects of the code that is gonna have unintended consequence, like the noise ordinance, for example. So I've gotta revise things where this only applies to development authorities.
Do we have an additional question from the council? Do you want this? Mr. Ronald, you go ahead.
I, I just have, I've been budgeting, you know, I, I, so I, I have to read this. And, and I, I have not been, so it's gonna be carried over, we, we'll allow you the opportunity to read into it.
We can get it next week, yeah, and we can hold it over, we have to, we have, have a little bit of time. Uh, Chris leaves on the first, I was hoping to get it done before he left. I said I was hoping that it's gonna happen.
Hope the children are often different.
Orders fourteen zero four four, orders to amend section fourteen there's three, contract procedure, we will vote, we'll vote.
This was in response to our committee meeting where we're talking about, uh, the use of discretionary funds and the limit, uh, on general liabilities, uh, use, uh, this is so that those items that don't need it, we can get those handled, but make sure that there's room for the city attorney to make the necessary judgment call.
Is it there a five thousand?
It says under five thousand.
Chris? Even if it's under five thousand, it's still gonna depend on what they're doing. Because five dollars, if they're, you know, running out and they're staying, they're gonna need to mature.
Sixty-four zero four five is the resign on special bond, consent resolutions being introduced. Thirty-seven seven eight three recommend approval for the ABC corporate insurance, so we're going to do your team. One, one on persons licensed to home, two suites, mobile on Central Page Drive. Forty, seven eighty-four, eighty-seven, eighty-five, seventy-eight, sixty, seventy-seven, other planning structures, public, and resources. Are we taking all these today or?
Carr, what, you say you want the city go forward from seven eighty-six on Tessa Street?
Yeah, yes, but go forward and I'm still gonna take a week, we can work into it, we can come back to it, yes.
Sixty, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, seventy-ninety, approval of award special bonds to the brothers and sisters employee of the month, park recreation employee of the month, and credit works at large employee of the month. Sixty-seven ninety-one, seventy-nine-two, seventy-nine-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, are attorney corporations to Africa Town Development, owned by Mayor Mobile Inc., Mount Sinai, Thurman Baptist Church, Boys and Girls Club, SoundCloud, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, South Carolina Inc., the Nest Corporation Inc., and Mobile County District Attorney's Office for Public Purpose and Approving Painters, zero three eight zero six, reappointed Louis Golden, Jared Millen, and Adam Metcalf to the Board of Justice, District Four, Five, and Seven. C I P resolutions being introduced, zero nine seven ninety-eight, we have to get order of appointment for all the potential bar clients and H bag, approval is to Mobile Museum of Art and Control, for the judge general. Resolutions being introduced, zero one seven ninety-nine, off our service, Mobile LLC to electronically track disadvantaged business participation, the city contract twenty-five thousand, we need three years. Zero one eight hundred, off our service, grant participation, with the Southwest Alabama Regional Library, State Yombe, community traffic safety code. Zero eight eight zero one, move works started to people, nation, for running for, um, M V D, circle, Delta Coast, the county center, forty-four thousand, seventy-seven, four hours, three percent. Zero eight eight oh two, move works on the T P M, for annual security building, for plan review software, seven thousand, eighty-eight dollars. Zero eight eight oh three, move works for the O S R materials, for general plastic roadway marking materials, cap engineering, seventeen thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars, please.
Mr. President?
Mr. Ronald?
I know we're running out of time, we're running short, but we're buying materials for, uh, roadway marking, so that's to put striping on roads, do we have the equipment to do this?
Yes.
So we do have a, a striping machine?
We have a hand striker.
A hand striker, okay, perfect, thank you.
Zero eight eight zero four, move works, safety zone holdings for compacted blue tow, light towers, M V Ds. Twenty-one eight oh five, on first time, that's the South Barnett and Patrick LLC, for all the things, moving the little more in service.
Anything from the council?
Yeah, um, I've got, uh, Carr, I missed a day, two things. Um, at St. Stevens Road, Craft Highway, and Wilson Avenue, we had a traffic change at the top of District Two, where East District One is pretty sure. The two lanes used to both turn in the same direction, but now one lane turns one way and the other does, it, it's, it goes the other way. Everybody is so programmed at that corner, I was up there yesterday. The bus driver almost turned over on me because the bus driver wasn't used to the change. Uh, the, the lights are doing one thing, but we need to do a little bit more to make everybody aware of that change because, I mean, I'm fifty-two, I'm, for fifty-two years, I've been doing the same thing right there, and I'm pretty sure everybody else has too. And, and I know that we, we tried, but it's gotta be brighter, lighter, more, more informational, the change right there, so if we can. Uh, the other thing is, is that, uh, CJ, if you can today, uh, our form of government, which is, uh, established by the Zogby Act, you know, strong mayor form, a strong council, we mayor form of government, was, was instrumented by Michael Figueroa and his big time involvement in that. Today is a commemorative, a commemorative of the day he died, he died this day back in time. So if you could at ten thirty or sometime today, uh, reach out for that, that memory and just the fact that it formed our current form of government in City Mobile.
We shout a home of silence.
That'll be great.
Mr. Dave?
City Council Finance, City Council Finance meeting will leave next week, Tuesday at one o'clock, or evening after the City Council.
Anything else from this council? Anything from administration? Uh, council is ten twenty-eight, uh, be prepared to start council meeting at ten forty-five. Can you just?